We were having a hiccup with this last week. There we go. Beautiful thing. Especially when it works. Scratching our heads for a good 10 minutes last week during one meeting. It's always uncomfortable.
No problem. It's good to meet you. It's a nice place.
I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be great.
Yeah.
We're very excited.
Hey, Rob.
Hey, Chris. How you doing? You know, refreshments.
Thank you, Chris.
I had no shame.
Just, just saying.
Good. How about you? How you doing, Julie?
Good. How are you?
Did I miss an email on Friday? I think I sent you one today.
You sent me one today. I sent out the big one on Friday to everybody.
I don't know if I deleted it by accident. I didn't see it.
367 pages. It didn't get kicked back to me.
367 pages?
Yes, it's probably our largest agenda to date. Yes, yes, yes. Yeah.
Was it actually, was it, was it more than that?
367. Yeah. Next meeting, it'll be larger.
Larger? Just keep getting bigger.
Yeah. If we keep adding things to public hearings, it'll be larger.
Good old days.
Yeah.
Zero, pound line road. Hi, Deirdre. What country are you in this week? Hi, John.
Hey. Hey, John. How you doing?
How you doing, John? I finally got around to emailing Nelson.
Yeah, anything?
I haven't got anything back.
Okay.
So I know Kathy isn't coming. She didn't mention that.
Right. Sierra is not gonna come.
Okay.
She's tied up with the kids. She indicated she might have to step off. It's getting to be too much with the kids and her husband works at night.
She's involved in a lot. She's involved in a lot.
Yeah, she, I told her to wait. It may quiet down.
I think it is good for it.
Yeah, it's been very hectic and... But I think we'll go back to, remember when we used to have to skip meetings because there was nothing?
Yeah.
What happens?
You're trying to imagine what that's like.
This is, tomorrow night is the end of my nine meeting.
Do I sign it yours?
Huh?
You lost one.
No.
Yeah.
Wow.
Looking forward to October.
Well, I've lost two. I have one left.
You lady is ready to cut loose and go now to four meetings.
Are you gonna be with us tomorrow?
I am. Yeah, I will be too. But she'll be doing the minutes for that. But yeah, she's ready.
The first one we did.
So that'll be, that'll be huge help.
You gotta cut her list at some point.
Gotta cut her list at some point.
It was like winter time.
You're not gonna dig a hole.
Not too busy with some of the other commissions she'll be covering.
No.
By him.
Yeah, especially like, I remember it was awful losing her.
Yeah, because we've been.
First yellow lab was January.
You don't have a hard copy of the minutes, do you?
And then got Frank, Frank Glasskey came over.
Yeah, Frank.
And he got the whole for us because. I definitely, I was like, there was no way.
I do have mine here. I wanna read them.
The dog lived on the property and I just, I got one.
And actually, no, but then it was weird because for whatever reason, then I had.
I can vote, otherwise I can't vote.
Our blank lab.
And I had ninety-one.
So it's a go figure. I don't know. And then, and then Hank, we lost Hank. I buried him. There we go.
Minor Bridge Road.
Yeah.
Ask her.
Two cars.
Yeah.
It feels like they still weighs on.
That's it, huh?
How are you guys doing?
How big is that? Is it connected to New?
Yeah.
How old are they?
Nine.
The old trail.
They're very happy. Beer is worrying me. But I don't see any beer.
Do you have electric?
No.
As we, we did that many, many winters ago when we had, years ago, when we had that high snow. We're basically, couldn't go anywhere with the snow.
Yeah.
And there was a coyote out there. So we put the electric on top.
The first one?
Let me just finish him. All right. What? Ready to roll?
Yeah, but it's like, where's the applicant? Isn't six thirty, six thirty is the public hearing for Bidoe Wee.
Then we go right into the meeting.
Yeah, but I was like, where's the applicant?
They're not here.
Okay.
I gotta start recording.
It's very good, John.
Welcome, everybody.
Detail.
This is the public hearing for, you know, we still don't know how big that house is.
Yeah, eight, eight bedroom.
Eight bedroom, how many square feet anyway? We're here for a public hearing for Bidoe Wee LLC, sixty-five Minor Bridge Road, construction of an eight-bedroom dwelling with sanitary system. If you remember last meeting, we said Steve Trinkus and Paul should do all their technical stuff and then come back to present at the public hearing what they agree with, what they don't agree with. Well, I walked out of the meeting after telling all the consultants not to call me, not to talk to me because Jim Kelly made an issue of that, although that's a first. A chairman can't arrange things with consultants. So what Steve do, Steve comes up to me and says, I'm not doing that. I'm not gonna design his, you know, I'm gonna write a letter, give it to the commission. I said, fine. Say that to Julie. Don't say it to me. So a week and a half later, maybe, he wrote an email, told Julie, wasn't in favor of working with Paul to come up with a solution. He, he attached as a letter and the letter, did we all get it? The letter gave his opinion, which was interesting and would be good if he was here, but then a day later, he says, oh, I got a conflict. I can't come to the public hearing. And then Michael Klein sent an email saying, I didn't get all the materials?
He, as of last Wednesday, he had not gotten any materials.
Were we supposed to send it?
My understanding is Paul had agreed to send everything digitally to everybody and not to the expert witnesses. They hadn't received anything.
Yeah, and he never did.
And no, not that I know of because we ended up, I ended up scanning in my stuff and scanning that, sending it out to everybody, things he had starred copies. And Jimmy scanned the maps, but they didn't obviously have layers to them.
So lucky for all these nice people out here, they don't have to sit through a boring public hearing. Because when Jim heard that, he said, there's no reason for us to attend because neither experts can be there. Although I would have liked to have Paul here and ask Paul some questions about ideas that Steve were putting forward, but it's probably better that we continue the public hearing. I suggest October third.
Um, October third is the planning meeting. There is nothing on their agenda right now and your planning chair should be here.
Right. She could do.
Oh, actually, Deirdre, you can ask your planning chair.
I, I'm online.
Yes.
If we have no, no business, we can cancel the planning meeting and do in the wetland instead. It's fine with me.
Because that's the day, it seems like Gail could make it and.
What day of the week is that?
It's Wednesday.
Um, no, it's Thursday.
Thursday.
How about the second? No, no.
Second.
Make the second. We need to make it the third because Gail.
I mean, the only other, yeah, Gail could make the fifteenth, but you'd be splitting this room with the board of finance. And if they need the screen, it's too early for them to know if they need it.
Why can't we just do it the night of the meeting, the next meeting?
I think we're over our.
It's cutting it close and we probably have to get another extension.
Well, why can't we just get an extension? Why do we have to do two meetings for this? Why, why can't we just do it all in one?
Because that one's gonna probably go long.
Yeah.
Well, is everybody gonna be ready for it though?
Well, I thought they'd be ready tonight. I'm mad I'm here and they're not.
I mean, because that's another issue.
Well, I'm gonna have a hard time making a meeting other than the regular meeting next month.
All right.
If it, I don't.
Then I will put that forth to, to two consultants, Jim and Paul.
Yeah, I, I mean, I was hard pressed to make this meeting.
Right. I know. It's, it's spent a lot of time on this and quite frankly, I think all the experts are the ones that are causing things to delay.
And who's getting paid?
I know.
Yeah, yeah. Good point.
So the, the October third tentatively is a Thursday, correct?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna shoot for the.
The regular meeting.
For the regular.
We started six thirty.
Um, okay, which is October.
That is.
Twenty-second.
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 I won't be here.
Where are you going?
Shenandoah.
Well, we're gonna have to try that date.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
You, you'll have to watch it. You'll have to watch it.
Okay. I mean, because, yeah, because I.
So when we.
Hard pressed to get here. I really couldn't, I had another commitment, but I came because I thought that was gonna be the public hearing tonight. So, yeah.
We'll, we'll try. It's not gonna be easy, Julie, to get all these people to.
Um, I understand that you can make a motion to continue the meeting since there's no date. We're also gonna have to re-ask, we're gonna have to republish it. And I'm gonna have to figure that one out tomorrow, how far ahead of time we have to do it. So the sooner we get confirmed on our date, the better.
Somebody wanna make that motion?
Motion to.
Continue the public.
Continuing the public hearing to a, on this, uh, undetermined date at this point in time.
Or we're trying for the next.
Tentatively for the, before the, um, the usual meeting on October twenty-second, so tentatively at six thirty on October twenty-second.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Well, by the way.
Yes.
I need to see, I didn't, well, it was a public hearing. That's why I'm all screwed up. That's all right. We have a four.
Russ, I'm gonna wanna walk that property again too. So eye contact, Julie. I want, I kinda wanna walk that property again.
I would like to too, John.
Okay.
Okay, because I would.
You and I.
Because some of the points, yes, but I think, I think John has, I mean, I think Paul has to, does Paul have to be there?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, the owners don't want us. So you gotta just call Paul instead of they. Okay, on to the special.
Motion. Do you have a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, there was, who was our second?
John.
Me.
You were second. Okay, thank you.
All right, on to the special meeting. It's a special meeting only because we're starting earlier than seven o'clock, which is supposed to in our regular meeting ten. A special meeting, we cannot take any other business. So nobody could be added on, on this. I will see Chris for Sierra. And we'll start with a call to order. Rob?
Rob Horrigan. John Smoliger.
Chris Hadry.
Sue Bitch.
I'm Russ Lorenzo. I chair the commission. We'll start with approval of the minutes from the public hearing of August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four.
I'm gonna abstain because I didn't read, I didn't get them. I didn't get the email, so I haven't read them.
All right.
Make a motion to approve?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So for one is abstention. Approval of the minutes from the public meeting, um, from the public hearing special meeting is September tenth, twenty twenty-four?
I wasn't here for it.
All abstain?
I'm abstaining too.
All abstain?
Make a motion to approve.
Better start reading.
And for some reason.
So Sue, you wanna make a motion to approve those?
No, John did.
John did. Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can, can I make a, um, I know you have like a ton, a ton of work, okay? That's coming your way, but that was all like at the bottom of, I think, of the.
That's because the Bidoe Wee application took up the first two hundred and ninety-one pages.
Because that was.
What I was wondering.
Seven total.
And, and I'm just throwing this out there.
And so it is, everything is loaded in order. And if you wanna stop by my office, I can show you how to. Because, because everything is actually outlined on the website. There is a way to get through it.
All right. Otherwise, I was gonna say, is there a way to like the, the, the minutes and the agenda and special letters get in a different file than what, or you can't do that?
This is everything that's put out in the agenda on the website, but there is, there is actually an outline function on there.
Okay.
Which I can show you.
Okay, all right.
Navigate it easier.
Right. Old business, Bidoe Wee, sixty-five Minor Bridge Road. We're going to table that um, because we are continuing a public hearing. Uh, Robert is here. Ten Old Lane, construction of a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling. Chris and I did a site walk. Um, I had no issues.
No, looks clean.
So I'll make a motion to approve this as a non-regulated activity.
Hold second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Told you, get out of here.
Thank you so much. Neighbors. We're soon to be.
Welcome.
You keep listening to her. Do you hear me?
Thirty-eight years, yeah. Thanks, guys, folks.
Okay. Close the page.
Yep.
And, okay, so now we're going to thirty-two Apple Lane.
Chris and I had a nice day together. We did. We went to thirty-two Apple Lane. Uh, is somebody here to talk about this?
The owner's phone last time.
Yes, they, they were notified.
Jim Sturgis.
Jim Sturgis.
Because he wants to take that island out, right?
Yep.
And why, I was confused why. So if you saw it, what, can you explain it?
I'd like to ask.
I think he said it was sinking. It, it had sunk since last time. Since it was built.
Didn't look like.
So that's, that's a man-made pond.
Yeah.
And the island was left there. I mean, it, I mean, it's not silting in from somewhere because there's no, it's just wetlands around it, right?
No, there's, there's pipes that come in from two locations, the, to the right where it says wetlands, and then there's that little area off the bottom. I think it feeds in from both of those.
Is it, I mean, is it?
Well, there were three pipes. There was one that looked like a curtain drain from the house.
Yes.
Then the pipe where it's, it's all wetlands back there. There's no stream, but water in that wetlands, I'm sure when it rains comes in there. Then there's another pipe where it kinda jogs out to the left.
From the slant.
But I don't understand the removal of an island. And that's gonna be very disruptive. But it is silted in, in this little circle area. It's very low around the island.
Shallow.
So is it?
So like this area of us is all like, has all silt around it?
Yeah, that's why they have that line. They're not doing the whole pond because the other part of the pond's perfect.
So I think what happens is that the, uh, the banks are probably very shallow.
Yeah.
So he, in order to deepen the pond at that area, he has to take out the island, I would think.
He's right. Rob's right. That's why. Yeah, he's probably sick of digging it out.
Well, if he had it deeper before, it would make sense that the.
Ah.
Island would be settling in.
I don't really have a problem with it. It's easily controlled.
I think he, I, I ran into him at the dump and he said he misspoke and he said there was like ten thousand yards of material, but it was really a thousand.
Okay, all right, because that's on the.
That sounded like.
Yeah, and the circle he drew doesn't look like it'll hold ten thousand.
Ten thousand is a lot of material.
Well, and that, yeah, and that I think was on the application.
It was.
It, I, I, I could be wrong, but I think, because I was like, or maybe it was on the minutes, okay?
Probably on the minutes because he did, I, I think I asked him that and he did say ten thousand. It was twenty-seven cubic feet, you know, yards, so. Right.
Yeah, it doesn't say, but. I'll look for a motion.
Is there a dewatering area, uh, pond material? Okay, and he's got silt fence up for that. And how, just a couple of questions.
Pump it into the wetlands there on the left.
Yeah, it's a little strain.
But how's he gonna transport the material from the, from there, trucking it, just?
But he's gonna take the, he has, it could, explain to me just what, Russ, where he's not disturbing that, but he's still, the whole, the whole pond's gonna be drawn down. He said how much?
Right, the whole pond has to be drawn down for him to.
And then he's pumping out into the left.
Pumping out of it, but he's not posing to dig that into the pond because no need to.
Okay, gotcha.
We could wait till next meeting and ask him to come and answer questions if you're not comfortable.
I, I mean, I just, one question I would have is what's he doing with the wildlife when he does this? Is there any kinda provisions for that? Is that a concern of ours?
Well, it is for the pond, but how you can attract a pond without killing the frogs and the turtle eggs and all that other.
I guess depends what time of year you do it.
That's a good. I'm sure spring is not a good time.
I think he said, didn't he say he wanted to get going on it as soon as possible or no?
Yeah, I think I heard him say that. Yeah. Well, what do you wanna do? You wanna table this till next meeting or somebody wanna make a motion?
Sounds like it should be tabled.
Table it?
Yeah.
All right. Chris, table it? All right.
I, I, I don't know. I just, you know, I, the only thing about tabling it is that if it's a really good time to do it right now before October.
Probably is because it's so dry.
Yeah, I mean, before, well, before everything starts hibernating, that's why I was thinking and right now we got, it's so dry. You know, and everything's gonna start going into the ponds to hibernate the leaf litter and all that, you know? Could, you know, come November and everything. So this is, it's a small window really, if you're talking about worried about what's gonna happen to the amphibians in the pond.
So the best time to do it would be October, November.
No, probably like October. Yeah, yeah. That's why if we, you know, because when it starts getting colder, then they're gonna start going into, you know, to the bottom of the ponds under, like I said, under all the leaf litter and all that. So probably.
Well, then make a motion.
I'll move to approve this as a maintenance activity.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Sue?
I think.
Any discussion?
Yes, I think it would be good to add to the motion that we would like to know when the work is going to be initiated and completed.
Right.
Because that's part of why we're, we're looking to make a motion to approve this tonight. So I think it would be good to know.
Or would you rather just send it, set a date that it should be completed by?
Halloween.
Yeah, 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 yeah. End of October, yeah. But I think that should be added to.
Completed by?
The end of October, yes.
So Rob, you wanna add that to your motion?
So I think she did. That was a condition.
All right. Um, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I actually have. Uh, so we're now at forty-eight Baker Road and this is the new site plan.
Wow, they got out, they got out to break the bank, huh?
So at the last meeting, it was kind of a schematic plan that was submitted. I've got your final plan. It's finished off. I'll watch it up on screen. I've got the wetlands, the, the, I've filled on the plans.
Chris and I went out there. I've been out there twice. Beautiful spot. Um, the wetlands are, as you can see over here, this is uphill. It's a big field and the house is going right on top. I didn't see any way that house could affect wetlands. And with that huge field in front of the drain, it should be no problem.
You wanna make a motion?
Well, Chris, you were there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any impact at all.
Okay, I'll look for a motion.
Hi, Deirdre. Hi. Hey.
So it's outside the regulated area?
Yes, it is.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve this as a non-regulated activity.
Well, it has to be regulated because it's a house.
Well, there, there is a, there's a small piece of wetlands that's, uh, that's right over here. So there.
Right, what about the pond? I don't really think of the pond as a wetland, but it's there.
Well, there's, there's underground utilities going around the pond. Those are any pretty close.
So it's a regulated activity.
I'll, I'll change the motion to approve this as a regulated activity. I'll, I'll change the motion to approve this as a regulated activity.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Jim. We, uh, we approved, we have some questions. Come on.
Can we reopen it?
We approved it, yeah.
I just want to talk to. Uh, we approved it.
You did.
But it has to be done by the end of October because of wildlife. Is that a problem?
Nope.
There you go.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, we just wanted to make sure before, you know, disturbance that everything was gonna be settled and plus we were like this is really dry right now, so it would be a favorable time to be doing it, yeah.
Okay, great.
Nice place you got there.
Thank you.
That's pretty decent quiet. All right, what's next?
Okay, we're going to two forty-four North Street under new application. Construction of a five-bedroom, single-family dwelling, driveway and septic. And Mark Lankor is here.
I have an administrative question.
Okay.
Did, did you see Chris or? Okay, all right, sorry.
It's all right, watching my back. You gotta watch my back. Hi, Mark.
How you doing? One time no see. One of our favorite, favorite properties, right? Does that bring back?
Everybody's ready to run out the door.
Exactly, so here's, you see it up there.
This is lot six?
Yeah, this is lot six. So this kind of gives you, you know, you got it up there, but little bit.
I can't remember which lot.
I don't remember which one this is.
So this is the furthest, the furthest one.
All the way in?
All the way, no, it's the furthest one off the road. So you might recall on the woods when this first came forward, lot six, what, this was what it was known as lot six, roughly a seven acre parcel, uh, was part of the original concept and all of that when it first happened, right? And then through the process of as the developer would jostle a few things, we did a lot line amendment. Didn't create a new lot. All we did is move some lines around and then this lot conformed to that original plan that this commission saw under many applications, okay?
Right.
Including this layout, uh, which we pretty much, we've conformed a hundred percent to what this commission saw when they were reviewing this, uh, the wetlands, you can see where they are. They're pretty much in the back, seven acres. More than probably sixty percent of this is not gonna be utilized at all. And it's, you know, a driveway, comes up to a five-bedroom house. Everything kind of flows from where the house is down to the street and that gets connected into the DOT. And we do have our, uh, permit with the DOT. Yes, they approved all of that. So that's all done.
And there's no wetlands on this property.
The, the wetlands is in the back, right here. Yeah, and then this is the setback. So our clearing limits just touch the very edge. But everything on this piece of property flows this way. So in essence, you know, we're, we've got no really regulated activities here. But being that it's, you know, the wetlands is where it is and this is actually connects and then cuts down through the other lots.
Right, is this connected to the swamp?
No, no, the swamp is on the next one over here.
Right.
It's over there. This is kind of, this is a, a seepage.
Yeah.
That comes off the hill, that comes down here, then it connects.
Stone wall somewhere around.
Well, here's one stone, here's this big stone wall here.
I think I was walking around.
And then this stone wall here. So that's, you know, so that's, and, and, and basically we're trying to keep everything, uh, you know, out of that particular area. What we've got is on drainage, we do have a couple of, uh, of rain gardens, oversized rain gardens too, that are gonna capture the water before it gets down to the state highway, so.
The footing drains are?
Right down to here.
Okay.
Nothing discharges out the back.
What about the roof?
Right here. So here's, here's the footing drain goes here. Cuts down. We know there's an open, it comes right down here. We'll follow this wall and then, then the roof drain goes into this system here. Test, the test bits on this site were very, very good. We had deep holes. Uh, and, and, uh, pretty well drained.
Okay.
So I'm not, I'm not concerned about that. Um, and the driveway is, you know, tries to hold into the contours and then up on the top here is pretty level. That's why this is here and and it's a limited amount of grading that's going on here. Most of the grading is associated with the driveway. So.
So I, I have a question during construction, we asked this of other applicants recently. Um, before the roof drainage was put on, you know, it got typically zip. Plywood that has, there's no capture of the rainwater. So in a, in a heavy rain event, you've got nothing controlling the water coming off the roof.
You do, you do from the aspect of, uh, where you put your silt fence or you using uh, or if you're using any kind of, um, uh, the, uh, you know, the, the rolls, you know?
Silt socks.
Silt socks, we use those. Um, and, and obviously everybody knows on construction is that if you let a contractor, I hate to say it, I've got one out in the audience, if you let them go, they're just gonna go, right? They're just gonna go. It's like, it's like anything else is that inspections need to be done routinely. I mean, you can't just and then you have to control the water. One of the advantages that we have on the site is that stone wall. Which is
On the bottom.
Right here, right here. So this stone wall, really, when you go out there.
But it also comes, comes this way too.
It comes this way too.
So that's a ba- barrier if anything.
They're all barriers. They're all barriers because in the other wetland, this system cuts across. Then you've got this lot and then you get the main ravine that could, one of the two main ravines that comes down on, after lot five. So in essence, we're really, our, our biggest thing is gonna be actually controlling to make sure DOT doesn't come after us.
Yeah.
That's really what it's gonna come down to because DOT system is there and, uh, we're connecting into it. So these all will be acting as temporary basins during the course of construction. So when they cut these in, they put these in. And then those don't get finished or permanent vegetation until after everything is stabilized. Then you come in, you actually create the, the, uh, the, the rain gardens with the proper basin and controls and that sort of thing.
You wanna go look at it? Should take a while.
Yeah. Is, uh, will you have the center mark of the driveway staked or the, the house?
I mean, we can, I mean, I can, I can, I can walk that lot. I know exactly where the driveway is gonna go and everything. But if that's what the commission wants to put a center line, we can do that and I can put a mark where the house is gonna be. But, you know, we've got pretty, we got test pits all over the place that kind of give us an indication of what that is at.
Well, I, I kind of think for like the, the house, for me, it's simpler if you just do like a building square. Versus every little corner.
Oh, we're not, we, exactly what we would do.
Okay.
You know, we would give a big enough footprint saying this is where it is.
Yeah.
We're not gonna.
Yeah, we just need to know generally. We don't need.
And I'll be out there. I mean, I hate to be honest with you, it's, it's, uh, I mean, if we do stake it out, we're gonna stake it out for reasons that, uh, the applicant wanted to get in there and start construction. Um, they're trying to, this is the only thing that's holding them up now, right now, just to get their building perm. So they've got everything in place, DOT is in place, everything. This is their last, you know, our last hurrah, as I would put it. And then we should be able to.
But you just said you're gonna have to stake this out for them to do that.
We're gonna have to stake them out to do the, to do the, the layout of the work. So if that's gonna be the case, let me work it out with the client as far as doing that and then you'll be able to see it.
All right.
You know, you know, I'm not gonna, I don't want to have them have to pay twice.
Right.
Doesn't make sense, doesn't make sense.
And that's why I'm saying we don't need a
Yeah.
Just, here's for the houses, stuff like, you know, that way we could walk around and
Yep.
Get a feel for this back here.
Yeah.
And it looks like a good plan, but I've we've approved plans before without looking at it and then.
No, no, that, it, it totally understand. When, when would perhaps that sidewalk happen?
Well, what would you, they didn't let us know and then we'll set it up.
Okay, so let me talk to the client and get it. Yep.
Right.
Yep, yep.
And you want to be there?
Yeah, were you offering to meet us out there for the sidewalk? Absolutely.
All right, that's cool.
Yeah, but I think more than two of us want to do it though, so. Two and then myself or whatever, you know, take you out and we'll go. I want to go walk it too, so we're all have to split up.
I'll go. Me and you will go. We haven't gone on the. Yeah, I, I want to see it.
Yeah. It's actually, it's a pretty lot.
Yeah, I know.
Pretty lot.
Yeah.
Is there parking right here? Isn't there parking?
There's an opening you see right there now. They cut an opening in so people could get up in there and, and that sort of thing, so.
Yep.
That's.
All right.
I'll just, anytime.
Thanks, Mark.
Let's make sure, let's make sure it's on a sunny day and we don't have a monsoon coming.
Right. Seems like we're a good.
Right now we are.
Yeah.
Just as a FYI, I'm a fly fisherman, so I'm always looking for the water.
Yeah.
Who's the tonic is down to one sixty. That is so low, this time of year typically four fifty. That's how low the, who's the, so here we is, we have this, all this rain this year and now we're in a drought.
It's all gone.
It's all gone. So, okay, thanks.
All right. What's next, June?
Okay, we are going to We're going to Town Line Road. Mark's coming up.
Howdy.
Hello. You again.
Yeah. Coming up, Phil, you know, your face.
Yeah. I don't know, that's for you.
I'm Mark Cleason, how's your license engineer with Smith and Company, here with, uh, half of the, uh, and base of trust. Uh, where the development, new home at one ten Town Line Road.
And that would be where the old White House was that they just knocked down.
No, next to it.
Next to it.
Where they had that. Somebody else owns that.
Yeah.
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 The one who owns everything.
Yeah, Arnhold, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, we're proposing a five-bedroom house. With this driveway coming off Town Line Road, checkly graded down low to, it's about seven hundred foot long driveway, way, way down. Um, where they wanted to put the house site. To put in drainage to intercept water so that it's all could collect into the central section of the wanted to break it up so we don't get all the water absolutely in one place. All our activities, we're grading and all that are well outside the one hundred foot regulated area of wetlands. Um, we have levels brought as placed in each of the drainage outlets. You have a recharge system for the house, groundwater recharge system, down, down grading of the pool area. You have the septic system down gradient, cool. I mean, the house, that's already been approved by the health department. Uh, we had some additional drainage, uh, because of the great greeting that the cuts over doing a current drain to address potential groundwater bleed out and as well the, the house area. The trans drain and find the garage, they'll be separate. The charge.
Isn't there? Isn't there a pond, like?
Way over here.
Did, did we, did we approve some clearing of it?
Yeah.
Is this a lot we approved clearing on?
Yeah, they, they cut some trees.
Yeah, with the. No, they pulled that out.
But that's, that, that's his property. And, and there's that platform that we walked by.
They were proposing it down there.
Deer stand in town.
And then, and then aren't there, aren't there, are there some catch basins in that field right now?
There is a drain line down here that, that runs all the way across to the town paths. That dumps out toward the wetland area. We're not disturbing that.
But there, so you're saying, because I thought there's like you're saying, because there's two ponds, but both the ponds are over on the other property?
The pond is on separate property.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not here. They, they would show it. But I think the doctor was gonna put the house, but I think the doctor was down there.
Yeah.
Right. I thought you couldn't have a house up there that could be seen from the road, no?
I, that's, that's Bridgewater though, I think.
Oh, the other side, you can't see it. Okay. All right, we'll go look at it and see you next month.
Would you want to stake anything or you just want to?
Yeah, would you just show us where the house and septic car? Is there anything else?
Well, usually we say driveway, don't we?
Yeah.
Where is the driveway? Oh, holy crap.
Yeah, it is a long way.
Is there a barway right here?
The barway is right here. There's a second barway here.
Right, we usually say like center line, the driveway and the
In the house.
Yeah, at least one or two, just so we have a sense of where the driveway.
Yeah, we'll stake the driveway.
Yeah.
Put a couple stake.
Yeah. Just basis, we don't need it surveyed and perfect, just to give us an idea where things are going.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, will you let us, will you contact Julie then, Mike?
I'll let her know, uh, just let, let her know when you're gonna go because, uh, there are cattle. I believe they're still using the field. So if you do go on the property, make sure you close the bar ways behind you. That way.
Is there a bull out there?
Because I go by there every day.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I've had a call before when there's been little ones that have gotten out on minor bridge.
Yeah. What's next, June?
Okay, we're going to John Cody's report. He is not here.
He's fishing. He texted me. You should see the fishing. Holy crap.
Uh, but this is what he had. These are his non-regulated approvals.
Okay. Suck usually busy.
It's a little bit busier than August.
A lot of stuff on Bacon Road.
Yeah, Bacon Road took a hit. And then what else is on?
Okay, we've got the N O V that is still open.
Has everybody gone?
I didn't get out there, so.
I didn't either.
I did. You did? Chris and I went.
Yeah.
Um, as you know, there's a report dated August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four from JJ, J M N. And, uh, in it, Mr. McManus describes saying, uh, if you want to pull it up, Julie, so I can.
It's here to read. It's your first page.
Um, he, he observed storage of loader, uh, a half-buried fifty-five gallon drum labeled lubricant, many tires, drainage pipes. Yeah, we, we saw that.
Yeah.
Um, he concluded that the concerns of Mr. Caranta and, uh, Mr. McDonald of potential impacts to wetlands and water courses should be investigated by the town. It should be investigated by the Wetlands Commission. He believes it should be delineated and a mitigation enhancement plan should be developed to protect the buffer of the wetlands here. Within the study area. Then he's recommending that a licensed environmental professional be involved for the testing of soils within and just beyond the affected areas. Including the regulated wetlands water course to ensure full remediation. Well, first they did contact deep spill unit and deep wasn't interested, I guess, because they didn't. Well, first they did contact deep spill unit and deep wasn't interested, I guess, because they didn't come down. They called Mark. And they told Mark, you know, the minimus things are not gonna be a concern, but somehow deep said that the wetland commission. Has jurisdiction over contamination and I've confirmed with Gail, we do not. And I knew that.
Yeah, you said that, yeah.
Huh?
You had said that.
Yeah, I, we, it's deep's job, but deep doesn't wanna come down here because they don't think it's a big deal, that's.
But can we force someone, a landowner, to test their soils?
No, that's deep's jurisdiction and.
Can they force someone, I mean, if there's.
Oh, they can, but it's gotta be, it's gotta be. Point blank, they're, they don't force you unless it's clear to the eye that there's a big problem there. Well, if you call them and say, look, this hydraulic hole was leaked, there's a stain here, they're not gonna force them to do a whole site wide test thing.
I I just, I was out there today, right, and obvious, there's obviously encroachment on the wetland buffer area. And right up, right up to the wetlands. I didn't smell any in that area that. They were talking about, um, I didn't smell any fuel, the, you know, any kind of oils or anything, but but I, you know, just, I didn't smell it. Um, but there is encroachment and they are working right on, right against the wetlands cleaning it up, I mean, with machines.
Well, what, what I I didn't see any contamination issues at all. What I see is a construction yard. Which I don't think is what the use is supposed to be, but that's not a zoning issue.
But we.
From a wetland issue. The wetland. You know, back then, and that's the problem, we're talking thirty years ago, I don't even think I was on the commission for.
When this was approved, when they got a permit?
Yeah.
See, I was gonna ask, what was the permit for?
Zoning out stuff to approve it before they approve the, uh. What what a home enterprise.
Okay, so it was approved as a home enterprise?
Right, and the wetland commission approved it, that this one fifty foot buffer area where the rocks are.
Yeah.
That's the only thing drawn on the map that they said had to be nothing on it. There was nothing else. Drawn on that map, just that one area.
Wait, the wetlands commission said that.
The wetland commission.
And that's on the west side, right?
That's on the west side, when you drive in to the very left. It's true, the wetlands goes all the way around.
It goes all the way around, and there's a drainage ditch that has been dug all the way around too.
Yeah, and there's a, yeah.
I, but I remember, you know, in my tenure on the commission, an application to do something else, a berm. Or something.
It was the berm and the crossing to get in the driveway to build that building. There was no need for crossing without that building being there, obviously.
So that building in the back, we approved later on with the driveway.
Just a crossing, there was no other stipulations. So if you look straight back, the Carantas took the wetland and made a lawn out of it. It's lawn right up to Mark's fence. And if you look back in the record, we called the Carantas out on that, issued them an NOV. Asked them to submit an after the fact application, which they did. And was approved. So we allowed them basically to fill the wetland and build the lawn there.
Right, right.
On the other side, it's so overgrown, but we know that wetland well because it's behind the McDonald. A buts Mark's tire fence. Um. So anyway.
But if we approve a driveway and a house, right, we approve it, there was a house location and a driveway.
It was a building.
Okay, it was an existing building?
No.
Okay, we we, that's what we approved. That doesn't give someone the right to approach on the wetlands.
No. I could, I, I agree. But there's two problems here. There's this big zoning issue in my mind, um, I'm not sure. That's taking time, I guess, because of the process, I don't, I don't understand that, but there's a big zoning issue because. If you read the zoning permit, he's not allowed to store all that stuff there. So. He basically has encroached on the wetlands because he has so much stores there, he's got no room, I guess. But it went on over years, just like Franny.
But it, but there is, there is an effort happening right now to clean things up.
Right, and he notified John today that he's done.
Probably, I was able.
Everything is done.
Oh, there you go. There's huge lag time.
Did you see it today?
I saw it today.
Does it look like it's done?
No. No, but that, that area behind all the granite blocks is the only part that's marked as wetlands.
That's right.
But that buffer should go loop all the way around because the drainage goes all the way around and the wetlands goes.
But that's not what the wetland commission approved. They approved just this area. So in my mind, if I'm him, okay, I'm fine everywhere else. Probably didn't even know there were wetlands there.
No, but my, someone tuck the trench, they know there's well.
Yeah, probably his father back in the fifties, I mean, you know, that trench wasn't just dug.
No, that doesn't make sense, but later on, if we give a permit for a house and a driveway, we're not giving carte blanche on. Developing right up to the wetlands.
I'm not arguing with you.
No, no, but I'm just saying, it just.
Yeah. Roxbury is getting very fancy.
Over on the right. Oh, yeah, good, go ahead. It'd take a while. It doesn't seem accurate.
Which loud is his, number ten?
Yeah. Wait, we, you wanna put the area on?
And which is Caranta, number nine?
The one that's all wetlands.
So.
How did that happen?
Okay, so how do they get to make a complaint against somebody when we all know that they have all kinds of activities going there?
Doesn't matter what one other property has, it's what's happening on this one. So all of that equipment is surrounded by drainage ditch and wetlands.
But it's showing that to the left is not wetlands, to the right, I mean.
But there's a stream there. It comes around.
I think it's a drainage dish, I don't think it's a stream.
Well, the, the driveway crossing is, there's a stream there.
Which is from the wetlands where zero zero nine is.
Yes.
I think that back when, those two wetlands were joined. And over the years, just got filled and this is common. You could see all his yard there, so he could make an argument based on this map that he's not within the fifty foot. But the letter from JMN is asking that the wetlands be delineated.
Okay, so I'm gonna say that, uh, see where all the equipment trailers are?
Yes.
At the north western, or a diagonal line from the wetlands up to that other property line, there's a stream right there.
Yeah.
And not delineated on this map where that wetlands is, it's outside of where that wetlands is.
Yeah, cause he's got a little bridge over it too.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you talking about?
Could you zoom in one, Joe?
Just north, that, you know, the top of the screen is north.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Pretty cool. So just above, just above all the equipment and the parking area, just above it, right above it, there's right, right there, there's a stream. That comes right down, that connects to that wetland.
Yeah?
I'm just saying, there's a stream right there that's not on this map. I'd be in support of having a. The wetlands, a soil scientist go out and stake the wetlands. But who's gonna pay for that?
I'm not.
Well, no, I'm just saying, you can't, I, I, you know, kid, do you?
It's part of the NOV, Rob, come on. The NOV, you could make them flag the wetlands. How do you make a determination if we keep, if he could say, no, I'm not paying for that, you know? It's a, we're under a notice of violation. We're trying to solve it. I would agree, you're not gonna be able to solve it unless you know exactly where those wetlands are. And then, once you know, then you could make him take everything out of a fifty foot buffer. This can't be there anymore. Take it out.
And the fifty foot buffer is because of what was previously approved?
I think if you do a hundred foot, you're taking away the whole property.
Right.
And that's not what I'm after.
Right.
And let's remember, buffer zones, we're not supposed to regulate them unless there's a direct impact to the wetlands. Quite frankly, him storing stuff within ten feet of the wetlands on a flat piece of property, what's the impact?
Well, there are multiple oil tanks there.
They're all empty. Of course, one of them looked like it had a drip some.
That's a refueling tank, but the, the underground tank that was removed from somewhere was left there, that's not supposed to be. Well, I guess, we're, what's gonna happen if it leaks, it's gonna go into the soil and what happens when it goes into the soil with on flat ground? It's not gonna just stay there, it's gonna go somewhere.
Yeah.
Could go to the wetlands.
All those tanks there now are empty. And we don't regulate.
Can you pull up the aquifer?
If there's a spill from a tank, call the deep, you don't call us.
Yeah.
Do we have access to this?
Yeah.
Is it?
Thought it was on the.
Uh, it's been on there for six months. Maybe not quite that. But these wetlands delineations on here are approximate anyway, they're not.
But ab- absolutely, I mean, they're not.
When was they last done?
I, I.
Cause the property is pretty dry.
I'm pretty sure Joe's property is not all wetland.
No. Well, where the house, right, right, where the house is built?
Yeah, go up, so Carantas.
It's right there, right?
It's showing the house is all wetland.
Is that where the brook comes across? I don't think that's where it comes across.
There's a brook on.
Look, it's driveway.
They have a bridge.
Half of Judge Bridge Road, there's no way.
Judge's Bridge there.
I think that's overly wide and. I think where the trees are behind Mark's, I think that's wetland.
I do too, well, there's this, there's a well-defined stream right there.
It's a dug trench. It's not a stream. Go in there. It's not a stream, it's a dug trench. Dug in the fifties, that's what the farmers did. They drained wetlands, they filled and drained wetlands.
So then, the people that, um, um, is it McManus, who's the?
Consultant.
Yeah, his, his description of it, cause he's talking about that drainage ditch, no?
Right.
I mean, he's talking about that being a wetland. Am I wrong?
Well, he shouldn't say that unless he flagged it.
No, but I.
He knows better than that.
That's what I'm thinking, he's calling a wetland, I'm not sure. Is that what you're thinking, that?
No, I think the area where that ditch is dug is wetland. And I don't know why he didn't flag it, put it in his report.
Wasn't on his property, uh, and he didn't have permission to go on that property. I, I think that's what he said.
Okay. That makes sense. All right, so what do you wanna do here? To solve the NOV, we want the wetlands to be flagged.
Yeah.
And we'll make further decisions based on that, but the decisions will likely be that we want a fifty foot buffer maintained. That's what you were granted back then, we're giving you the fifty feet. I don't think we could regulate more than fifty feet because. More than that on a flat piece of property, and you can't regulate, well, if the tank leaks, something that could happen.
So, so from this area here. You know, there was a machine working here.
Mm-hmm.
And it was all, they were rubbing and right, right down to the drainage ditch, all the way around, this is all disturbed. So I think part of the.
I don't think they were grubbing, Rob, I think they were pulling crap, stuff out of there.
It was just all dirt, there was no, it's just all dirt right now. So I think that that needs to be stabilized.
Okay.
See, didn't hate.
Mark, you're here.
I am.
We're having a discussion, Mark, on. Um. Rob went out today and saw, you know, grubbing in the wetlands and dirt still in there. So was that pulling stuff out of there or?
Yes. Grubbing in the wetlands?
Not grubbing, you had a machine working in the, you know, pulling stuff, you know, it's all just dirt right now from.
That's what I was supposed to do, clean everything back. I, I was permitted to do that.
But are you gonna see and hate that?
Yes, absolutely.
And it kinda went down and around to the, to the west side too, to the west side of the property, the cleaning up that you were doing. Kinda went down and around, went from the top down to the west side.
I was supposed to do that whole perimeter after John called me. I mean, initially, it, it was only supposed to be. What was on the permit, and then he called me and told me I had to move over.
You got any questions, Mark?
No, just, I just wanted to know if it was gonna be rated seated.
And you had a question about, um. Mark, when was that crossing put in? That, was that put in so the building could be built?
My driveway?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
No, it was way before the building. My uncle actually did that.
Okay.
I, he owned a property before my parents came.
Okay, and when the building was built, was there an approval of the wetlands, obviously?
Yes.
For the building?
Yeah.
And there were no stipulations or?
Just, just the setback from that front brook.
What was the setback, fifty feet?
Yeah, I believe so. Yeah, I mean, it is fifty, I believe that's what.
Couldn't you, you also came in for like a permit to put a berm up, didn't you, between you and McDonald's one time?
Yeah, that, that was, he wanted a fence or trees and John Cody and I discussed the possibility of a berm. And yes, that didn't get remembered. That has nothing to do with this other thing.
To be honest, the NOV is about a violation of a permit. It's not about other violations that may be on the property. The commission's concern, Mark. Is the permit you were issued clearly shows a line drawn right here, right?
Yes.
That's all it shows.
That's all it shows.
Shows nothing else.
That's correct.
But the commission feels that this is wetland back there. Now, Rob is calling. This is stream, but I think it's a ditch, right? Is it a stream or a ditch?
Can I come up?
Yeah, yeah. Where, where are you talking now?
This is your problem.
Right. But show me, show me what you just said is wetlands.
This, well, this is, uh, CTP, TIS, right?
Yeah.
It's a new program.
Mm-hmm.
You can see it's not accurate, I mean, here's Caranta's house.
Right.
How they built it in a way. So that, this, this actually probably goes like that. So it's not accurate.
Right.
So what the commission was discussing when you came in is, can we have this flagged by a wetland soil scientist so we know where the wetland is?
The only wetlands that was discussed.
The only wetlands that was discussed in the permit was this intermittent water course.
Okay.
So Rob. It's, it's a dry ditch is right now, but it is, it's an intermittent water course.
You win.
But an intermittent water course could be a manmade, could have been manmade years ago.
It, I think it was, Rob, to dry out the wetlands. I really do think.
I have one on my property. It was put in by the farmer.
Because that thing was in there, like I said. My uncle, we bought it from him, but he, you know, that house is really old. That property is really old.
But you're pulling fifty feet back from that, right? That's what you're doing.
That's what I did. It's done.
Right, so you just have to rake it and seed it? Or seed it, whatever. Seed it, hay it.
Whatever.
And then on the left side, it comes down around on the left side, right, of the, of the map?
Yeah, I'm fifty feet everywhere.
Right, but I, I know, I know, but that's why.
It does. It, it, it all funnels to the pond. That's where it goes. But you know where the pond is. All that, that it, it is a ditch, but it is an intermittent water course. Goes to the pond. There's actual piping in there from way, way back.
I, I think that that, that ditch, whatever it is, is pretty well-defined. I mean, it's, it's there. It goes, you know, there's a bank to it.
Well, whether it's a ditch or not today, it's still a wetland.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is it's well-defined. You need to have someone flag. You know, when you see a stream, you need someone to flag a stream. You know, with Steve Banks. I mean, I, I don't, I don't think on his side of the stream that there's associated wetlands with it. What I'm saying. Might be, uh, might be on the north side.
So the commission's asking that you flag the wetlands so we could intelligently understand what the fifty-foot buffer is and if the fifty-foot buffer is being maintained. It's the only way we can know. Again, these maps are very, very, you know, I mean, like I said, the Corranta House is in a wetland according to this map, but we know that's not true. We know there's wetlands around. But that's the only way, Mark, for us to, uh, really assess that. That's it. We need to get it flagged. Or at least that's what we're discussing. Like, there's your why don't you report on what you saw on the site?
Uh, it's me, it looked like he had cleared everything. It was dry. Um, yeah, he has a lot of old pieces of equipment, but it's his property. Um, in my opinion. Yeah, he's doing a little bit more than the average homeowner. But I don't think it's within our purview to go and, and say exactly what is in everybody's soil and, and limit them to what they're doing. It looked like he was cleaning it up as he was asked. And it's dry.
Right. Did you smell or see any contamination oil?
No.
Chris, you wanna report on your?
I didn't smell anything, but in, in my thing, in the wetlands, go around the top and come down the right side, the eastern side. And there was a lot of equipment, structures, oil barrels, storage of items within fifty feet of it.
Okay. And the only way we're gonna know, Mark, is if you flag it and then we say, okay, anything within fifty feet needs to be moved out.
Even though the initial permit only shows the one buffer? That was what I was.
That's the point I was bringing up.
That's what I was granted a permit by.
That's the point I was bringing up. This is an NOV on that permit. I'm concerned about expanding it to, like, okay. Now, rest of it's no good because the wetland commission gave him permission to, to store. But it's up to the commission. I think it should be flagged so we know.
When was that original permit?
Pardon?
When was the original permit?
Long time ago. But one of the, one of the points a consultant made on another application about something we approved twenty years ago, you gotta prove it again. If you read the court cases on that, the courts don't, on an NOV, the courts don't think the wetlands has a right to then go and start looking at other things. Our focus has to be on that permit and the NOV. That's what the courts are telling. And that makes sense to me, like.
It does, it does.
Because he got a permit
Yeah.
thirty years ago.
Yeah.
And now you're putting today's standards on them. And he's grandfathered for that in wetlands. He's got a permit. It clearly shows on the map where the fifty-foot buffer is.
But was that original permit based on inaccurate data?
Back then, no, everybody, that's the wetland.
No, thirty years ago, we were flagging.
Twenty years ago is oh four. It's October of oh four, it said.
Well, that A two survey would have showed where the wetlands were.
This is the, this is the permit there?
This is the permit.
There's a diagram.
Date paid, October twelfth, oh four.
Yep. Wait, where you, where you seeing that?
Bottom line, that's a zoning permit.
Payment to DEP, that's part of our permit.
Yeah, that, that's the zoning permit.
Date paid.
Okay, oh one, issued on oh one, October first, twenty twelve.
That's when DEP was paid.
No, issued on, um, go up. No, go.
Right there.
Cash.
October first, so this was in twenty twelve. By zoning.
It's twelve years ago.
No, but see, underneath DEP.
Yeah, deposit.
That is the, is that a deposit?
That is, that's the deep, the deep thing.
Okay, and that's twelve also, October second, twelfth. Right?
Yep.
It's not October twelfth, oh two, it's October second.
Yeah.
Twelfth, two thousand twelve.
Okay.
Right?
Right, right.
So we're on a commission, Russ.
But we're babies.
But can we just look at the?
I, I don't remember.
But is there a map?
Very bad.
Lost from the past.
And regulated approvals.
Alright, well, what are we doing?
Well, I thought, I thought we were gonna see a diagram.
The only diagram that's included is from the.
It's the one showing where the.
JMM.
The area, he couldn't.
When did this start?
Mark, do you have a map with you? We're gonna be here all night looking for a map.
I know.
And I've seen the map. Have you seen the map?
No.
He's the one that's showing it to me.
Maybe he took it with him, fish.
Why don't you do this, Julie? Get the map from John, PDF it and send it to all the people on the commission. Then you'll see exactly what they approved.
We approved.
We approved. I think I want Deirdre to sit here. Mark, do you have an issue with flagging the wetlands, please?
I, I guess I can. I didn't have to when I got this permit.
But we're asking you to do it now because we're having problems determining where fifty feet really is. There's no way to know.
So you're saying on the, on the east side of your property, the stuff that you have there, it doesn't matter because there's no wetlands there, or there is a wetlands?
Well, we don't know that. Nobody flagged it.
I.
But you're, you're, your permit allows you to do that, is what, what you're saying.
Right. That's correct.
But if it is a wetland and the permit was issued and it's encroachment on a wetlands, you know, did, what, did it specifically say you could go to that side with, with the permission?
No, it's specific.
That map that I made for the application, a little sketch, only showed the buffer area towards going downhill to the corner, and that's it.
So you're talking about to the left, right?
West with Mark.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what's the impact if he stores stuff within ten feet of a wetland, a flat piece of property that's been developed for forty years? It's not like we're talking about a.
Well, then why have it, then why have a flag? If it's, there's no reason to do it. I, I guess it's just like, uh, I think the issue.
Cause how do we know where the fifty feet is?
On the other side.
Yeah, cause he's just got it drawn on a map. There's no we gave approval based on a map on a napkin. Which we did back then. Franny's got a lot of approvals on napkins.
Well, that's why we don't do it anymore.
So that's why I'm saying, I'm asking him to flag.
I went to the base of the hill where the intermittent stream trench starts. The base of the hill, that's where I measured my fifty feet.
And you put a stake where the fifty feet is?
Yeah.
And there's rocks just over it now? Okay.
That, that's a fifty-foot delineation and then the other way, there's paint marks on the ground. And it's all clean. There's nothing within that fifty foot as of today.
But that trench, that intermittent water course goes all the way around that back.
No, it does not.
We looked over the fence, it does.
It doesn't go on this, the Coantre side of my property. It starts right there. I don't know what you're looking at.
So it doesn't connect to that?
It does not.
Right, but, but it starts farther down where your tire fence is.
It starts like where the tire fence starts. That's where that trench starts.
You're saying to the south of the tire fence?
What's that?
You're saying south of the tire fence, the trench starts and goes under, is that where it starts to go under the driveway? Cross under the driveway? Yes, if your tire fence runs north-south.
Right.
You're saying.
The north end of the tire fence is where that trench starts. It doesn't go anywhere towards their property.
The trench?
Yeah.
The, the trench doesn't go towards your.
Your tire fence goes, the more the load it was parked and leaking, there is an open water. The soil scientist came out, he sent his report of where he saw it and that there's wetlands everywhere. I, I mean, I had a, a soil scientist come out and issue a report for what he saw. So there would be no confusion. There's tires, there's tons of tires shoved under the thing. There's pipe racks now. Yeah, you cleaned it out, but there's only five hundred square feet in your permit for outside storage.
That's a zoning issue, Mary. We don't go there.
That's not correct.
It's a zoning issue. We got enough on our plate. So zoning could take that up. What we're trying to figure out is how do we, how do we move forward with the NOV? Do we have John go out and look, confirm that, that area? The permit said could not have any storage. It's now clear? And lift the NOV? Does the commission wanna have him flag it? I think we have, we, we need to stick to what the permit allowed and what he, what he violated and not expand it beyond that.
So I think, I think we need, because we don't really have record of the, that's what we're waiting for really, is what record of the map and what specifically was stated, right?
I saw the map and the map, and what he's saying is he, it's very clear where the wetland begins on that side. It's very clear. It's right there. So he measured from there to a stake. And his storage, which his permit did not allow, is now moved. Now, we look at the map, which is a GIS and it's not a hundred percent, but it doesn't show wetlands there. Where, where you wanna have fifty foot all the way around, it's not showing it goes all the way around. And that's what he's saying. Right? Could you bring the map back up or is that a big deal?
Yeah, I can bring it back up.
Russ, I think we gotta stick to what the original permit.
I agree. I don't think we could start expanding it to. That's like giving somebody a permit to build a house and then it's rules change and you tell them they gotta move the house.
If someone submits a plan and it doesn't show all the wetlands. Right?
Well, the commission should have asked for it then.
We're here to protect the wetlands.
We are here to protect the wetlands. That's right. Right? So commission decide, do you want them to flag it or not? We'll go one by one. Chris, you said you did want them to flag it, right?
I think we should, yeah.
Yeah. Deirdre?
I don't think we should go outside the original permit.
Okay, John?
I, I think it may be unfortunate that, uh, the original permit was inadequate, but he hasn't approved permit. I don't think we have to stick with that.
Plus, I'm, I'm just thinking like if we do ask him to flag it and he does and it shows wetlands on that east side, what are we gonna do?
There's two things you could do. You could either ask him to move everything back fifty feet or you can't regulate the buffer unless there's a direct impact to the wetland itself. So he can make a claim it's flat. Water's not going that way.
No, my question isn't about, it's about the fact that he has a permit and doesn't require a buffer on that side. Right? Doesn't require that.
Right.
So if we do see wetlands on that side, we're not gonna do anything anyway. Because the original permit says he can store on that side. It's only buffered on the west side.
Yeah, this is, this is a tough one. It's not easy. Sue? So you're saying, no, we shouldn't have.
Well, I just, I'm asking the question if, if, because I think it will show wetlands on that east side. Uh, you know, I'm sure of it. If it does, are we gonna do anything? Can we do anything? You know, if we can't do anything or we're not gonna do anything, what's the point of having a flag? You know, if we can't do anything, or we're not gonna do anything, what's the point of having a flag?
Right, and this isn't something that was placed there. Couple of years ago. It's been there for decades.
Is that just dry storage over there, Mark? On that one? Is that just like dry storage, like the pipes and the? I mean, there's no tanks on that side?
Well, there's a.
It's not even wet over there.
And also, did you see the pictures we sent to the commission of all the rain going by and the oil slick going into the open water course? From the rotted out gas tanks?
I didn't see a rotted out gas tank.
There was gas tank, there was a fifty-five gallon drum, there's oil.
Well, call DEP.
DEP said it's not in your permit.
They are, I've talked to our lawyer, I've talked to four environmental attorneys today that I work with. We have no jurisdiction. So DEP doesn't wanna deal with it because it's de minimis to that. So he's saying, go to wetlands, they could do something. Tell them to read the state regulations.
To my property, why is the oil scientist that came out, why should it be minimalistic to you? The oil is going into the wetlands, are you? There was a leaky.
Look, we got eight people here, nobody saw oil. You're the only one seeing oil. He's not even qualified. He's not an L E P. And Jim didn't say there was oil there, he saw staining. Mark admitted to deep, yeah, there's a little hydraulic hose standing there, and deep said, take care of it.
The fifty-five gallon drums that were buried, the tires that are sitting in the wetlands, that's just, okay.
I, I, did you see, did you see tires in the wetlands?
It looked good to me.
In fact, he got the permit after I cleared my property. And he was only get the permit to store fuel tanks with you guys. That's what you signed off on. Not to all this that has grown into the wetlands.
You could care less about the wetlands. Let me tell you right. Well, well, if you did, then you'd say, there's no tires in the wetlands. If there were tires in the wetlands, I'd be as furious as you are, but there's no tires in the wetlands. I don't, I didn't see it. I haven't seen it. You, I don't know what the agenda is, but I'm not, this commission is not gonna play to your agenda.
I'm not.
You, you have an agenda. We're not playing it. We're gonna be fair to everybody.
We can be fair.
Pardon?
We can be fair.
We are. We're a fair commission.
I'm just going back to two thousand and twelve, when he had to get the permit, when I cleared my back. And I had to flag the weapons. And there was definitely no equipment, oil, or anything like that. In fact, my back, my back wasn't.
Russ, different people do different businesses, businesses out of their properties. They don't always get permits for them. If Mark has a permit. To have a certain area. And a, a certain buffer zone, then that's what we should stick to. Not anyone's emotion, not anyone's agenda. We should stick to whether or not he is outside of his permit, and that leave it there.
I totally agree.
This is still the United States of America. We do not have the right to tell people what they can and cannot do. Go into their homes and dictate what, what work trucks they have on their property, in their wet, wetland area. There's a lot going on in this town. But let's stick to the permit that was issued. It looked, it's dry. He's cleaned it. I don't know why we're going after one of our residents like this. I think it's disgraceful.
Well, I, I, you know, looking, uh, what, if I live where Meredith lives, I wouldn't be very happy about what I'm looking.
The wetlands behind her house weren't taken down years ago without a permit. I'm on the commission.
I don't care.
I know you don't care, Meredith. I know you don't care.
Meredith.
They cleared wetlands. They wouldn't even see it.
What?
They wouldn't even see what was going on in Mark's property at the time.
Meredith, we're having a discussion. You cannot disrupt the meeting, please.
Oh, I'm just stating that that was a hypocritical statement.
Please. Thank you.
But I, but I do, the one thing I do say is what Chris said. Our job is to protect the wetlands. That's our.
It is. I agree with Chris.
That, that's like, you know, that, you know, it's just in the back of my head.
All right, so how do we protect the wetlands? What are we, what are we doing?
I agree, I agree that we're here to protect the wetlands, but we got this permit.
I think there's two, maybe, you know, two situations almost, where really what you have to be looking at. The NOV is the permit, and that that gets taken care of. He's removing what's in that.
Right.
Buffer area, okay? Now, and that satisfies that. Now, I feel that if there's. There, there's a secondary issue that could be taking place, but that doesn't really involve the NOV with. Okay, and I feel that if. What is being stated is taking place on the, I guess, kind of like east side or northeast side of the property. Which is the concern, which isn't where the permit was, correct? All right? And the stated wetlands at that time, that, that's, like, that doesn't involve this right now. That, that's my opinion.
I agree with Deirdre that. We need to, we're here for an NOV, for a permit that was issued. We need to make sure that it was the work that we required him to do is complete. John will have to go out. But I urge you all to go out and see that it was complete. See Meredith's complaints about contamination. Go look, see if you see tires in the wetlands. She just said there's tires in the wetlands. I haven't seen tires.
Are the tires, is she referring to the tires that are under the fence? Is that?
No, they're backed up onto the fence, and they're shoved under the trailer. That's storing tires, or whatever. They're shoved underneath on the ground, and the tire, yeah.
I saw tires on the fence, but that, that, that didn't seem like it was a wetlands to me. Um, but, but I just wanna say, so Chris saying that we're here to protect the wetlands, but also, but Deirdre said, we're also here to. To, you know, allow people to have their rights to properties. You know? And, and we've been a very good commission in doing that.
Right.
Over the years.
Because we live here. He's our neighbor.
But the carantas are also, so they have a legitimate concern, and maybe it's not a wetlands concern. I, I, you know.
I think it's more of a zoning concern, but I'm not, like I said, we got enough on our plate.
So I think.
I think everybody needs to go see this. That's what the next step needs to be. Because I don't want you taking my word for what I saw, or what Chris saw. We all have, may have different opinions. And it's important that we see, and now that he says it's done, you could come back and say, instead of having John tell us it's done. You could say, and I'm gonna go look, because he says it's done, I'm gonna go look again. I urge you all. And all you gotta do is drive in. He doesn't need to be there. He doesn't, you drive in, you walk around, you get in your car, you go home.
I did take pictures of that. I'd rather everybody look. But I did take pictures when we were done. After Rob, like. Because we weren't gone when we were there.
Mark, he reported there was a smell of diesel. Was it you, Meredith, or did JMM say there was a smell of diesel? Somebody said there was a. Pardon?
Yeah, Jim McMahon.
Jim noted a smell of diesel. I didn't smell anything when I was out there. Did Jim say where, like, in the back, near your property line?
It was five feet from the open water, where the water was partly leaking. And where all the barrels were on my property, in the camper. And then, you know, it got all moved around because there wasn't really a plan of cleaning up, and moved all over the property. So we paid a soil scientist to come out, instead of just saying that it's us doing this. So there's no agenda, there's no emotion. We love our wetlands in the back. You should come see it. The habitat for the hawks, the rabbits, the deer, the eastern fox turtle.
I got them all too, believe me.
Yeah, that's great.
That is great. I love it. I just want the coyotes and bears to stay away from my goats, that's all.
All I'm saying is that we all have to live in the standard of protecting the wetlands, no matter who we are.
So. Got a plan?
I just have one quick, Mark, where's that fence on your property?
Excuse me?
Where is that fence? Is it right along the property line?
It's my side of it.
Just, but right close to it, right?
Smackdown.
Nah, it's, it's ways away.
Like ten feet?
No, it's four or five feet.
And that stream, that ditch that we talked about is on, not on your property, it's on Caranta's property?
It starts on theirs, and then it goes through.
And it crosses under your driveway?
No, that's a whole different stream. You're not even talking the same stream.
I'm talking on the right side, over there, comes down.
Nothing to do with the stream that goes over my driveway. That's a whole different area.
Talking this stream, Rob?
Yeah.
Goes up here.
Okay, but that.
Nothing to do with this.
Not that one, on the right side, over by the fence, on the right side, the right line, up between the carantas and the. Right, coming down, right there, follow that line down, follow that, right there.
This one. There's no, there's no.
There's no stream in there.
Isn't that, isn't that where the fence was?
Yeah.
And didn't you say you peeked over, and there was a stream or a ditch?
It's a ditch area, there's a lower area.
You did?
Yeah.
Wow. That's interesting.
We'll take another look.
There's nothing back there. It's, they just raised and seated it. You're talking a different stream, Rob. That's the stream that goes under my driveway.
All right, the best way, really, is to go out and take another look. Think a stream's there. We're not gonna learn it there. We're gonna learn it when we go out there. So we're just spinning our wheels. All right, what else, Julie?
Do you wanna give a chairman's report, or adjourn? It's up to you.
If anything, we need to. We need to revise our regulations. One revision needs to be, we need to, instead of the two thousand two guidance document for stormwater. We need to make it the twenty twenty-four one. Because what's in there now says two thousand two guidance, and not as amended. So we need to change that. We should look at our fees. I hate charging people more. We charge a lot less than other towns, but that doesn't make other towns right. Like Bridgewater charges a thousand bucks for a commercial application. Now, we don't have a lot of commercial applications here, but.
Yeah, I can't remember one.
You got one right now? And you'll vet though?
Didn't we already get one?
They got away with a lousy, easily hundred fifty bucks. So. Would everybody just take a look at the regs and see if there's things we want, we should change, so we do it all at once? Because we gotta have a public hearing and all that. Just look at the fees again. One thing I wanna change is where it says what needs to be in an application. I wanna add, at the commission's discretion, so. We can make a decision that that's not really needed for this application, because right now it's carte blanche. Okay? I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?